Microphone is on. Good evening. This is a special Riverbank City Council meeting, Tuesday, March 18th, 2020. It is 6:00 PM. This meeting is, will be held in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order Number 25-20 issued on March 12th, 2020, the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Governor, Government Code, Section 54950 et cetera, and Federal Americans with Disability Act. This meeting will be held at its regular location, City Hall, Council Chambers at 6707 Third Street, Riverbank, California. In an effort to control the spread of the COVID-19, the city will impose social distancing measures for all individuals present and require individuals to maintain at least six feet of distance from others present. This means very limited seating will be available. Once capacity is met, no more people can be allowed to enter for health and safety purposes. All meetings are open to the public, but in keeping with the recommendation of the public health officials for the COVID-19 safety measures, the City of Riverbank strongly encourages remote participation via alternative means of access. Other means of access for the public viewing are government televised channel, Charter Channel 2, and AT&amp;T/ Uverse Channel 99. Public comments and participating to items of consideration via email, written public comments will be received via email for during the time the item being considered is open for comment by the mayor. Please follow the following protocols. Emails before the meeting, send comments via email to cityclerk@riverbank.org and they will be provided to the council for consideration and made part of the record. During the time the mayor opens the item, send comments to cityclerk@riverbank.org when announced to do so. And the subject line indicate the item number that you are commenting on to help identify your comments. Every effort will be made to read all comments up to five minutes, but this allotted time may be reduced and some comments may not be read due to time limits. The time allocated and the number of emails read will be at the discretion of the mayor. All comments received will be made part of the city record. Emails to agenda items received after the mayor has closed the comment period for that item or has moved on to another item of business will not be included in the record. Public comment via phone call. Calls will be received only during the time the mayor opens a public hearing or opens the item for comment. You may call area code 209-863-7172. One call at a time will be received. The normal allotment for five minutes for comments will be allowed, however, this remains at the discretion of the mayor due to the new process of comments. The video recording of this meeting is usually posted on YouTube within 24 hours of the meeting if there's no technical difficulties. Go to http://www.riverbank.org/AgendaCenter. The mayor has the right to stop any uncivil decorum. For questions, contact Annabelle Aguilar, City Clerk at Aguilar@riverbank.org, or 209-863-7198 before 5:00 PM on Tuesday, March 18th, 2020. At this time, I will start with the special meeting. The special city council meeting for the City of Riverbank is now in session. Today is Wednesday, March 18th, 2020, at 6:04 PM. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and individual liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Via teleconference, Councilmember District 4 Darlene Barbara Martinez, are you present?
I am present.
Via teleconference, Councilmember District 3 Cal Campbell, are you present? Councilmember Cal Campbell, are you present?
I am present.
Thank you. Via teleconference, Councilmember District 2 Cindy Fosse, are you present?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Louise Udivi.
Here.
Mayor Richard D. O'Brien.
Here. Any council or authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Are there any conflicts?
Hearing none. We'll move on to public business from the floor. Pursuant to government code, in reference to a special meeting, the public has the opportunity to address the city council only on items appearing on the special meeting notice. Individual comments are limited to the maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. At this time, the public has the opportunity to call 863-7172 for the next five minutes. If we've received no phone calls, we will continue. At the same time, the public has the right to provide written public comments to be received during that same five-minute period, and the email for that is cityclerk@riverbank.org and indicate the public comment period. Is there any public comment? Please submit them now. Seeing and hearing no public comment, we will move on to business at hand consisting of item 2.1, Adoption of Resolution Number 2020-009 of the City Council of the City of Riverbank, California, Ratifying the Assistant Director of Emergency Services' Proclamation of Existence of a Local Emergency. Before I continue, I would like consensus to waive the reading of the resolution by a roll call vote.
Do I need to make a motion for that?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion that we waive the reading of the resolution.
A second.
We have a motion to waive the reading in a second.
Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udivi.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
That was up to you there, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Good evening. Council's in the room and councilmembers on the phone. It is with a heavy heart that we adopt this emergency services proclamation. As you know, by this point, unless you've been sequestered, the coronavirus, also known as COVID-19, was first detected in Wuhan City, Hubei Province, in China, in December of 19. Fast forward to March 11th, 2020, the World Health Organization officially classified COVID-19 as a pandemic. On January 31st, United States Health and Human Services Secretary Alex Azar declared a public emergency for COVID-19 beginning on January 27th, 2020. On March 4th, 2020, the Governor of the State of California declared a state emergency in the state of California due to the number of confirmed cases of COVID-19 in the state. On March 13th, 2020, the President of the United States declared a national emergency response to the rapid spread of COVID-19 across the country. The transmission of COVID-19 has occurred at an accelerated pace since its introduction in the United States just a few weeks ago. With the rate of transmission only increasing, it is imperative that local jurisdictions do everything in their power to prepare for, respond to, mitigate, and recover from COVID-19. Section 3713 of the Riverbank Municipal Code empowers the Assistant Director of Emergency Services, who's the Assistant City Manager, Maricela Garcia, to proclaim the existence of threatened, excuse me, to proclaim the existence of threatened existence of a local emergency in the City of Riverbank if the city council is not in session, subject to ratification by the city council within seven days, which is why we're here this evening. On March 16th, 2020, the Assistant Director issued a proclamation of the existence of a local emergency, proclaiming a local emergency as a prerequisite for requesting and receiving any available federal or state funding. By declaring a local emergency, the city can't obtain additional resources, establish an immediate plan, and respond quickly to urgent situations. This will minimize disruptions and allow the city to focus on day-to-day operations while addressing the spread of COVID-19 as effectively and efficiently as possible. The local emergency declaration will enable the city to request any available funding from the California Disaster Assistance Act, the Small Business Administration, or any other funding available as a result of the proclamation of local emergency. Based on the information contained here, and staff recommends that the council adopt the resolution, and since you've waived readings, there's no need to go through the detail of it, but essentially details what I just summarized for you. The adoption of the resolution ratifying the proclamation and existence of a local emergency will allow us to be eligible for those funds I previously stated and set aside money that is set up specifically for local emergencies. In addition, if the council would like to add any provisions into the resolution, we were notified prior to this meeting that a number of our other neighboring jurisdictions will likely be discussing an advisory notice to their communities as a stay-at-home, not order, but advise. And that's essentially a soft version of a shelter-in-place where recommendations are made to the community about who should stay home if they can. Also, just before the meeting, the county announced first via Facebook Live stream that they would be making some type of similar recommendation. I haven't seen the language on either of those yet. They're very new, but my understanding prior to coming to the meeting was that they were purely advisory. So if council was interested in doing so, you could add that to this proclamation, but otherwise, we would need to bring it back in some other form Tuesday night. I have quite a few updates regarding the city's response to this pandemic, but those are probably most appropriately stated to you in the next item.
Thank you. For the city council, are there any additional items you would like to suggest to go into this proclamation, or shall we take a look at it again and update it at our next regular council meeting?
Vice Mayor Louis Ribeau here. I would like to see that provision added in the, just so we are being proactive, the shelter-in-place advisory as well.
So we are advising the citizens to shelter in place, but not mandatory?
Right.
Any other council comments?
I agree also.
Okay. Any other comments?
No, I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. At this point, I will open it up for public comment for both phone-in, again, 863-7172, or email cityclerk@riverbank.org for the next five minutes, or as long as we continue to get comments.
What are we, what are you recommending, Mayor, for the businesses, you know, we're open to the public?
Would you, yeah, you have to stand up.
It helps us so we can get you on a mic so people can hear.
Say your name.
My name's Chris Austin. I'm a local business owner here in the downtown, and my question is, what do you recommend for the businesses? I know we've been going back and forth and just kind of, as far as protecting our stylists, our clients, we feel like it would be a good thing for us to just have a two-week grace period. Just, my salon, there's 12 of us, so that makes, if everyone is with a guest, about 24 to 30 people at a time. So I just want to get advice if this is something that I should, you know, be acting on with my business here in town.
The governor and the state of California is providing assistance through the Small Business Administration. I would recommend that you take a look at your layout, that you measure at least six feet between chairs, but you're going to be in very close contact with your customers. You have to be able to prevent any type of spray that when you're speaking, to come in contact with your customers. So that is a very tough decision for you to make. I would have your staff, at minimum, every other day they work, and try to maintain your six-foot distance. But you can't maintain a six-foot distance from the people that you're serving, your customers. So that has to be some type of protection for your customers as well as for the employees. So I can't tell you how to do that. I would suggest, though, that you take a close look at it. If the order does come down, then your business will close. So look at it that way and how you can best serve your clientele, your employees, and then also, I can't tell you what to do, but I would strongly work with the Small Business Administration. Opportunity Stanislaus may have some information on that. So those are the things that I would, I would look at. The state should have some type of system in place. I read it. I, it has to do with unemployment, that once, if you worked, let's say your, your work week ends tomorrow, okay, the next, the following day, if you lay your people off saying, "I need to," they can start drawing unemployment the day after you lay them off. But if you're, you wait, and I believe I'm correct, but if you wait until they're working that one day, you have to wait until that pay period has ended, and then the following day, they can be on unemployment. Encourage them to use vacation time, encourage them to use their sick time, and work out the best way you can for your employees.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, as of right now, we do not have any emails sent.
I have one more minute.
Yes.
And Crystal, I would also advise, take, take a look at our Facebook page or website. We will have updates as they come to us, okay?
And if you want to give me a call tomorrow, I can get you hooked up with the Small Business Administration.
Seeing we have no additional public comment or emails, we'll move, bring it back to council for consideration.
I'll make a motion. We approve.
Vice Mayor, just so that we make sure we have the language very clear in the proclamation regarding our recommended stay-at-home, can we clarify that where possible, the City of Riverbank would recommend that you stay home? Is that fair language?
You have it written out, right?
Shelter in place.
Sorry, shelter in place.
Yeah, I'd like to see the shelter-in-place advisory.
Yeah.
The City of Riverbank advises residents to shelter in place. Advising.
There, so practically, there's no teeth to it. It's, it's simply a, that our advice to you is, if it's possible for you, you stay home.
I understand. I have to make sure that the language is appropriate where it is not seen as an order, because we're not ordering them yet.
Well, perhaps what we could do is, that language that I just said works, but when we put out the press release related to it, we'll make it very clear that this is not a punitive order. Tom, is that something like that?
Yes, we could just put shelter-in-place advisory, make that the new number three, and the current number three, number four, and then the details of the press release.
I'm sorry, you can't hear. There's noise on the line.
Yeah.
Can you repeat, please?
Yes, councilmember. What I said was, as Sean noted, we could put a very simple number, we'll have a new number three, and number three in the current resolution will become number four, and the new number three says that the council advises a shelter-at-home recommendation, but the press release would contain all of the details of what that is.
How, how do we recommend shelter in place?
Could I say, could we say recommends, the city council recommends the public to shelter in place, however, it is not mandatory?
Yes. Okay, because advisory is.
Yeah.
That was my question.
That's probably me.
Go ahead, go ahead, Councilmember.
That was my question, if it is mandatory or not, or is it an advisory?
Yes. I'm going to put it in the resolution as a recommendation by the city council, but not mandatory. So we would vote on the resolution as amended?
Right, and the amendment is new number three, the City of Riverbank recommends residents to shelter in place when possible, and the number four was the old number three.
Yeah.
Okay. You make that recommendation?
I'll make that recommendation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve as amended and a second.
We will include in that paragraph to not be mandatory, correct?
Right.
Okay. Councilmembers Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Fosse.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Udivi.
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you for that difficult. That difficult job right now. And now, we're going to move on to item 2.2. It's a general local public health COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mayor. This will be the first, I'm hoping, actually, I'm not hoping, of many, but I suspect that for the foreseeable future, you'll see this item on your agenda. At the time the staff report was published, there were three confirmed cases within Stanislaus County as of when I left my desk this afternoon to come to this meeting. That number had increased to five. We still do not have adequate test kits available in the county, though I'm hearing that help is on the way along those lines. The Local Emergency Operations Center has been activated to a Level 1 response, which means seven-day-a-week coverage. Staff has participated in updates and information sharing with the EOC, Stanislaus County, and all nine Stanislaus cities virtually every minute of every day for the last three days and into last week as well. Staff are working to create a response plan to limit public access to city offices, as well as canceling many different routine classes and events through our recreation department. On Monday, March 16th, management authorized the closure of city offices to the public effective 12 noon. That order will remain in place through Friday, the 20th, and we are requesting that council give us direction to extend that order through the end of this month and reevaluate thereafter. We will be able to provide more of a comprehensive update at your regular meeting, but just in general, here's sort of what's happened. We immediately had each of our departments create a response plan that was broken into three stages, and this was all done middle part of last week. Stage one was basically continuing business open to the public and just attempting to mitigate our risk by keep making sure we're practicing good sanitation and distancing. On, as the situation worsened Thursday and public concern worsened over the weekend, we moved to stage two of that plan, which was closure of city offices, and instituted more strict social distancing guidelines for our staff, as well as cancellation of all nonessential travel, nonessential meetings, and that, and then literally 24 hours later, just this afternoon, I authorized the splitting of city staff into two teams. We're calling them Team A and Team B. The point of that is to divide up management as well as line staff so that if there is an infection, it will not infect the entire staff and take down one of our essential city departments, like, well, all of them. So our goal is not to provide less services, it's to mitigate our risks so that we don't end up in a place where we are unable to provide services. So I'm looking for direction from council tonight to continue that program through the end of the month. We will report back. We also, in addition to that, in anticipation of any, and I'm not being told that this is going to occur, but in anticipation of any statewide lockdown or local lockdown, we have created a list of essential employees who will, if it's a scenario where people have to, can only travel to and from work if they have essential job classifications, we'll be able to create them, a, we'll be able to create essentially a special badge for them to be able to get to and from work to perform their essential duties. In addition to that, each and every department has come up with a strategy that even while
County as of, when I left my desk this afternoon to come to this meeting, that number had increased to five. We still do not have adequate test kits available in the county, though I'm hearing that help is on the way along those lines. The local emergency operations center has been activated to a level-one response, which means seven-day-a-week coverage. Staff has participated in updates and information sharing with the EOC, Stanislaus County, and all nine Stanislaus cities virtually every minute of every day for the last three days, and into last week as well. Staff are working to create a response plan to limit public access to city offices, as well as canceling many different routine classes and events through our recreation department. On Monday, March 16th, management authorized the closure of city offices to the public effective 12 noon. That order will remain in place through Friday, the 20th, and we are requesting that council give us direction to extend that order through the end of this month, and reevaluate thereafter. We will be able to provide more of a comprehensive update at your regular meeting, but just in general, here's sort of what's happened. We immediately had each of our departments create a response plan that was broken into three stages, and this was all done middle part of last week. Stage one was basically continuing business, open to the public, and just attempting to mitigate our risk by keep making sure we're practicing good sanitation and distancing. On, as the situation worsened Thursday, and public concern worsened over the weekend, we moved to stage two of that plan, which was closure of city offices, and instituted more strict social distancing guidelines for our staff, as well as cancellation of all nonessential travel, nonessential meetings. And that, and then literally 24 hours later, just this afternoon, I authorized the splitting of city staff into two teams, we're calling them Team A and Team B. The point of that is to divide up management, as well as line staff, so that if there is an infection, it will not infect the entire staff and take down one of our essential city departments, like, well, all of them. So our goal is not to provide less services, it's to mitigate our risks so that we don't end up in a place where we are unable to provide services. So I'm looking for direction from council tonight to continue that program through the end of the month, we will report back. We also, in addition to that, in anticipation of any, and I'm not being told that this is going to occur, but in anticipation of any statewide lockdown or local lockdown, we have created a list of essential employees who will, if it's a scenario where people have to, can only travel to and from work if they have essential job classifications, we'll be able to create them, a, we'll be able to create essentially a special badge for them to be able to get to and from work to perform their essential duties. In addition to that, each and every department has come up with a strategy that even while working remotely, or in the office one week and then not in the office the other, that they will be able to continue to provide generally the same services, provided those haven't been canceled, like for example, we won't be having taught time or some of our senior programs for the time being, but rec will be working on other future events in the instance of water and sewer, those folks will still be out there maintaining the equipment, we'll just be doing business slightly differently than we typically do. The order as well, for those folks that are sent home on a one-week basis and then back to work the next week, will be on paid admin leave, provided that they are available for phone calls during normal business hours and can be ordered into work at any time. So we think we set up a pretty foolproof plan to keep things going as they are, in anticipation that this situation may get much worse as cases continue to rise. We also hope that those types of things that we're putting into place now will minimize our risk internally, but also externally, and our view is that the, every interaction face-to-face that we can avoid at this time, not only serves, you know, me, but it also serves each and every person as well, because as we've heard in various media reports, there's a large percentage of people that do not even know they're carriers of this virus. So that's a generalized update, like I said, there's a lot of detail and other things that on Tuesday night, we're going to need to chat about. We've already developed our agenda for Tuesday night, and one of those issues is going to be utility billing, and we're going to have to, as we found over the last 48 hours, we're going to have to make a lot of this up as we go along. So we certainly very much appreciate the guidance and direction of the city council. I've probably been on the phone with each of you a dozen times a day for the last couple days, and it'll probably start to be even more, I'm guessing. But just want to get direction on our general philosophy moving forward this evening, and anything else that you may want us to kind of focus on or bring back for your consideration.
Are there any comments? Go ahead.
You said that, just to clarify, you said that you would, the next update about all of this, not just 30 days, or a change in the plan in certain days, I'm quite not understanding.
No, no, the next substantive update we have planned is Tuesday night, next Tuesday, at your regular council meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
To clarify, there, Councilmember Martinez, that this, right now, is a 60-day event, but it can be extended as long as the governor keeps it. But this is set in place for the next 60 days minimum.
Thank you.
I would suggest that we follow the city around us. Modesto, I believe, is going to announce that today they put their employees on essential and nonessential, where the nonessentials are paid admin leave, as you said, Sean, available to take calls. I suggest that we do the same with our employees, to both protect them and our citizens.
Yeah, so we have, we have that list fully developed. One of the things that we want to be sure of, we're working with each department to make sure that if there are unique cases, we're adapting to that, but tomorrow will be the first day that we try this bifurcated schedule, and what we, we, if we went to a full, only essential staff model, we would need to be reporting back to you with what the service changes would be, because they would be significant, we would talk about probably about half of our staff. But certainly, we can move in that direction too, if that's what council wants.
Sean, I'd like to suggest that we follow the plan, and maybe look at what Cindy said, and we can always modify in the future if we see things that need to be tweaked and whatnot, but I think you've got a good start with what you presented.
Luis Ribe, Vice Mayor. So I think we're all learning, we're all going through this for the first time, and I'm learning as much as Sean is, and I told Sean, I think, yesterday, that he's doing a really good job handling this situation, I think this is a great, the rotating shifts is a great idea, it's a great way to keep staff safe, so you have my full support with this, and we'll just keep taking it day by day as we go.
I would like to also see that we expand into buildings at the LRA, where there's some office space available, not being utilized, that you could spread your staff out a little bit further. That way, it'll minimize any contact, or eliminate any contact, especially those who are in a support role.
Mayor and council, one thing I didn't mention that wasn't discussed this evening, but we, we are likely also going to implement, I actually have to apologize, because it's, I haven't been focusing so much on the city, I haven't spent as much time at the LRA, but we are likely, if we haven't already, going to be shutting down the offices at the LRA to public access, because most folks can, they only need to get into, access their mail, which we can help them with, and they can pay their rent via check or some other service, so we could minimize exposure that way as well.
All right, this, go ahead.
You'll be continuing the, the practice of limiting those coming into the office, correct?
Yes, we'd like direction tonight to extend that through the 31st.
I think that should continue, as you have been, just doing business in a different way, serving the citizens through phone calls and emails, putting them somewhere that they could come to the office and make their payment outside. I don't know if we have that ability, but limiting who comes in.
Yep.
Why through the 31st?
That was going to be my question.
Why not through the 30th of April?
Well, we picked the 31st just because it was the end of the month, and we wanted to, literally, as you know, Mayor, every day I call you is something completely different, and I think it's one thing, and then it's another. So we would be, I would be happy, it would make it a lot easier for us not to have to return to you a number of times if you extended it through the 30th, provided that we understand that if things change significantly, we'll come back and say, "We think it's safe to open now," and council can bless that.
Right, but I don't want to keep every 14 days, coming back and having a special meeting to declare it for another 14 days.
Yep.
I'd rather have it, cut it short, once the emergency has eased.
That's, that would be a lot easier for us.
Luis Ribe, Vice Mayor here, so since we're doing the stage three for 60 days minimum, I say we do the same thing with this, just keep it together.
That's up to the governor, he waived that 60 days, it's a minimum of 60 days, but you don't have to come back in 60 days if he still has the emergency.
End of next month.
Could be, yes, it depends on what the governor does.
Okay. I think the end of the 31st is a little too soon, though.
Okay, I am going to open it up for public comment, but I will advise council members, if you still have comments, please continue with it while I'm opening it up for public comment. Can I do that? Okay. At this time, members of the public may call 863-721, 7172, that's 863-7172, or email cityclerk@riverbank.org. So while we're waiting for any comments, I'd just like to make a comment, Sean, you and your staff has done an extremely great job, Maricela declaring the emergency when she did, was in concert with everything that we have done, and that the COVID-19 is our top concern right now, and that you have adequately addressed it. I want the, our residents to understand that this city council wants to assure everyone that we will continue to provide the best in municipal services, but at the same time, our top priority is to protect the employees and the public at all costs. During this time, when a call is made by one of our public works or any of our other employees, we are to minimize contact with the public or with the residents, and we expect and ask the residents to be respectful of the distance requirements that have been in place.
Mayor, also while we're waiting, I'd encourage everybody to go to the City of Riverbank webpage, we have a lot of really good resources that help you with any kind of concerns you may have about getting good information regarding COVID-19. The other pretty neat thing is our recreation department created an online virtual rec page that has links to things that you can do at home, resources regionally, that will, that you can continue to stay active while staying at home. So I'd recommend anybody that's kind of looking for something to do if they're going to self-quarantine, go to that page.
Darlene, I have a question on the seniors that you serve, are there individuals who can look in on them to make sure that they're doing well? I'm not asking that you do it.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I don't think there is at this point.
One thing.
Unless it's, unless it may be someone from the county, I don't have access to any information about them.
Okay, thank you.
I can also let you know that all of our FIDA and TCE sites, our voluntary income tax assistance programs have been canceled as of this Monday, and we're letting everyone know that there is an extension for the federal until July, and an extension for the state until June, and that after the end of March, we will be getting back in touch with everyone to cancel appointments as, as we are given the okay that we can do that, if not, it may be longer. But as of Monday, everything was canceled, all of our clinics.
Okay, thank you.
Also, Mayor, while we're waiting, Chief Rittenhour has advised that there really have been very minimal changes to the sheriff department's operation schedule. Your lobbies are still, still open, correct? So there's still, they have a protective barrier, so they are still able to see people. There's some services that we're doing that's just slightly differently, but all of those, you know, important emergency services are still fully active, our on-call staff still are on-call, so if there's road problems, or water problems, or sewer problems, they will be out there fixing them.
Do we have any emails?
There are no emails, Mayor.
All right, I closed the public comment on item 2.2, that was just a general update, and we want to thank you for participating in this special meeting. Our next regular meeting is on.
Mayor, you can provide direction on this item, but it would be very helpful for us, can we get consensus on the council regarding our staffing and then also extending our closure through April 30th?
Okay. All right, the recommendation is that we continue the closures through the 30th of April, and that we, right now, approve or agree with the city manager's staffing plan that has been sent forward.
I would agree with that.
Anyone?
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
Okay, we have consensus on your plan. Our next council meeting is on March 24th at 6:00 PM here, and this meeting is now adjourned.